First order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, consent agenda, we have the October seventeenth, twenty-three regular council of minutes, October thirtieth, special council minutes, request to approve fire chief election candidate and the winterfest assembly permit.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Motion passes. Public input, do we have any written correspondence?
No written correspondence.
And the sheriff's office isn't here, so we will hold on to that for a minute. Under administration, Prairie Island Indian community fee to trust application, you guys can step up.
We can let them introduce themselves and, um, yeah, hear from President Johnson.
Um, I have with me today some booklets of our, our tribe. I know that we didn't have them ready at the time when we met before. So I have a group of them here for you guys all to have, and it tells the story about Tinta Wita and where we were and where we are now. So I'll leave them for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, city council. I'm very happy that we're here at Pine Island. And it's an honor to have this opportunity to address you this evening on behalf of my tribe and the Prairie Island Tribal Council. My name is Johnny Johnson and I'm president of the Tribal Council. On December twelfth, in about two weeks, will be my last day of office. And I will be retiring and I would have been serving, I would, I'd be, I will be serving my twenty-eighth year on Tribal Council. And so again, it's a great opportunity that I can be with you guys for my last duties to just discuss and talk to you about the relationship we are having and how it will get better. As I look back over my time in office, there's been countless advantages for our tribe that I am particularly proud of. We are strong, resilient, self-sufficient nation with a bright future. But it is days like today that truly stand out. Today, we are here because of the relationship that has been built with Pine Island. And our Dakota way of saying it is Wazie Wita. Wazie Wita. Since our tribe purchased Elk Run five years ago, I wanted, I want to thank, of course, the mayor and the city council for a good way you have worked with us. You have helped strengthen our government and are helping create a safer future for our tribal members. Since purchasing Elk Run, we said that it was our goal to be good neighbors and that we wanted to work with all local governments to strengthen the region. And we are working hard to do that. Wazie Wita Pine Island Community has welcomed us, has warmed our hearts. You've demonstrated a sincere desire to learn about our tribe and issues and threats we face on our existing land. You've committed the time and attention of our staff to meet with your staff and help create a model for how we can support each other and work together, government to government. Tonight, this council, this city council will consider a product of our work, intergovernmental agreement that will serve as a roadmap for building and maintaining a productive relationship between our communities that strengthen the region and express our support. For our, for my tribe, the prospect of returning to Wazie Wita Pine Island is special. While I know the city leaders and staff are familiar with our connection to the land, I recognize some of your residents may not know the story. So I'd like to share a little bit of our story. We are Birawaka Twans Dakota, those born of the water. My Dakota ancestors called these lands home for countless generations. They raised their families, hunted, gathered food and medicines and were laid to rest in this area. In fact, the name Pine Island comes from the Dakota Wazie Wita. A Dakota leader, Chief Redwing, Atanka Mani, is known to have camped in the Wazie Wita area before Europeans settled. So returning to this land is meaningful to our tribe. We purchased Elk Run because of our connection with the land, but also because we needed a safer option for our tribal members who wish to live as part of our community. We are a small but growing community. We just have over twelve hundred tribal members. Nearly fifty percent of those members are under the age of eighteen. So we are a strong, we have a strong future that's worth protecting. As some of you know, our existing reservation at Tinta Wita, and that's how we say it in our Dakota language, Prairie Island, Tinta Wita, is a very small land base that faces consistent trifecta of threats. We have one of the nation's oldest operating nuclear power plant and then growing a stockpile of toxic nuclear waste located approximately seven hard, seven hundred yards from us, not on the same small island we all live on. In addition to that danger, we face nearly consistent threat of flooding from the Mississippi River. A challenge made worse when the Army Corps of Engineers built Lock and Dam Number Three. And finally, access to our isolated reservation. And what I mean by that, it's one way off, one way on, is often blocked several times a day by railroad traffic that crosses through our lands and often carries hazardous waste. These threats drove us to find new land and a safer option for our, our members, and that's what led us to Elk Run. As we've discussed with your staff, we are working on the administrative steps necessary to have this land taken into trust and made part of our reservation, but is still part of your community. As we look to the future, providing new housing options, government services to our members is our top priority, followed closely by identifying economic development opportunities that strengthen our tribe and the region. I want to conclude my remarks by thanking you again for the opportunity to address you city leaders of Wazie Wita and residents. We great, we are grateful for your past, your past support of our efforts and hope you can continue that support as we progress. And again, I want to say Wopilatanka, which means thank you in our Dakota language for being in front of you. And we know that this is going to be a great relationship and whatever we can do and you can do to help each other out, that's what we want to be a part of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll open up the Florida public comment. Okay, no public comment, we'll move to B, request to approve an intergovernmental agreement.
I'll move approval of the intergovernmental agreement.
I'll second.
Take a vote. Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jason is an aye, motion passes. And C, request to provide a letter of support.
I'll move that we provide the letter of support. Is that what you're looking for, what you need?
Yes, if I may, the letter that you have in front of you is slightly different than the letter that was in the packet. The only thing that was changed were the number of acreage for Elk Run and then also the acreage that is in the application, the fee to trust application.
Well, just back to Mayor, may I just, a quick comment and I don't think there's another opportunity to meet it to weigh in. I appreciated the President's comments about the good relationship that we've developed here working together. I would say, I say it with a smile on my face a little bit, Jesse, legal counsel to the tribe, is very capable and has a team of lawyers working with her. And I've said to Elizabeth that I felt a little out of hand, but I've done the work that I need to do to get myself caught up. But I do appreciate the legal work that the tribe, through their in-house counsel and then the various attorneys they're working with. They've been quite, quite helpful to me. I guess the only thing I want to say about the letter of support, obviously the letter of support is something the tribe has proposed to us, has asked us to approve and send in in support of their fee to trust application. That is consulting with local governments about these requests for land into, into reservation status and to trust through the United States, that there is a process for reaching out to local governments. So this is sort of a normal part of the process. What Elizabeth says is right, they, the tribe, proposed the language. I kind of reworked it in a way to emphasize, to acknowledge the point that the President has made, which is that their current location is imperfect, right? I mean, they're immediately adjacent to a power plant and there are some other risks related to the, to the river. And so there's clearly motivation on the tribe's side. We've acknowledged that, but we've also emphasized that from the city side, this is an opportunity for economic development in the community, economic development that you, the city council, had wanted for a long time. And you've done a lot of things, obviously, I won't try and go through the whole list of things you've done to promote economic development. This is a great opportunity for that. And so the letter now kind of emphasizes that a bit more from our side of the equation. So I just wanted to blather on for a minute about how it has been a positive relationship and I think we look forward to moving forward. You know, one of the things, if I can take one more minute, one of the things in the agreement you've just approved that we, on your side of the table, we're in the discussions have added is the idea of completing the conveyance of the forty acres that I talked to you about in the past. Obviously, that is a source of funding that we need to push forward to get out from under our arrangement. And that, the tribe understands that and is now with the language in disagreement, is going to help us with that, is going to be supportive of that. And we expect to be able to work out the terms of that here in the very near future. So everything has been quite positive, obviously, we had to do some wordsmithing and back and forth and lawyers have been doing what lawyers do, but it's all been, it's all been quite positive. So, so anyway, you were talking about the letter of support, I have looked it over, I reworked it and it's good to go from my perspective.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
So we have a motion and a second.
We do have a second?
Yep, discussion, I don't think so.
But I'll second.
Okay, now we do.
There you go.
Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jason's an aye. Passes.
We'll go on.
So we'll move on to resolution twenty-three thirty-four, approving the write-off of outstanding checks.
As the memo states in the packet, these are checks that were written in twenty-two that were never cashed. Every November, we bring to you a list of checks that are owed or need to have them written off.
I'll move, uh, resolution twenty-three twenty-four, approving the write-off of outstanding checks.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Twenty-three thirty-four? I thought you said twenty-four.
Twenty-three thirty.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jason's an aye. Resolution passes. Resolution twenty-three thirty-five, approving the twenty-two tax assessments for unpaid debt for Goodview in Olmsted County.
So these are unpaid debts to the city. Essentially, every November, what we do is we bring this list to council, which would then certify them to the property taxes of the listed parcel of IDs.
Do they include water bills? Mostly.
Yeah, anything from that, some type of invoices from various things. So, but typically, most of them are unpaid water bills.
I'll move resolution twenty-three thirty-six. Nope. Sorry.
We're having trouble reading numbers today.
I'll move, I already crossed it off, I got ahead of myself, I'll move resolution twenty-three thirty-five.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jason's an aye. Resolution twenty-three thirty-six, approving the twenty-two business licenses.
I'll move approval of twenty-three thirty-six, approving the twenty-two business licenses.
Second.
For discussion, did the, stay the same, do they go up or?
Um, so we haven't set the fee schedule, but there aren't any new businesses, these are all, all of our businesses from, that we have previously.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second. Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jason's an aye.
Sorry, a little late on this, I guess I didn't scroll down quite far enough. I was a little concerned that one of the waste haulers did not bother to fill out the application in full, i.e. what they're going to be charging their customers.
That's a problem that we've had in the past, we have gone back to them, asking them to fill out that information and.
May I make a motion to withhold their license until I provide that information?
Yes, I missed that.
I missed, I was going to ask about it, I just, yeah, kind of cooked right along there.
Yeah. We can table their license till the next meeting.
I think I make a motion to table their license until the next meeting, in which we would encourage them to provide this information so that it can be given to our, uh, citizens in accordance with the ordinance as it's written.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
To clarify, that is just for waste management, sorry.
Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jason's an aye. Okay, now we'll go to twenty-three thirty-seven, declaring polling locations for the twenty-two primary general election in Goodview in Olmsted County. Looks like it's going to be at City Hall, or no, at the Fire Hall.
I'll move resolution twenty-three thirty-seven, declaring a polling location.
Second.
Any further discussion? Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jason's an aye. Motion passes. Okay, number F, request to approve the L M C I T waiver.
Uh, this is another routine item, so if it looks familiar to you, we approve this every year. Essentially, what this is, is Minnesota statutes has a limit on, uh, a tort limits on claims, uh, that is at five hundred thousand dollars per individual and one million five hundred thousand dollars for any single occurrence. Every year, each city needs to consider whether they would like to waive these tort limits or not. So that is the waiver for you. In the past, the city has not waived the tort limits, and that would be my recommendation.
So we approve the waiver but not raising the tort limits?
So we approve the waiver, there's two checkboxes, so. Both are fine, choosing the, we are not waiving the monetary limits on.
All the cities I work in refer to this on their agenda as approval of the waiver form, but it's confusing because you make a choice on the waiver form, and so you're approving the non-waiver of the set.
Can I speak a motion that, what she said?
Yep.
Sounds like an attorney was involved.
Yeah, exactly.
I make a motion, we use Elizabeth's recommendation, she can do it how she wants.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? No? Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jason's an aye. Request to approve the twenty-two seed a contract.
This is.
Huh.
I don't know about that.
This, this is our twenty-two seed a contract, it essentially looks identical to the contracts that we've had in the past. It would maintain CDA in our community for four days per week. Currently, we have mentioned our community three days and Sandra, our community one day. The difference is, is that there is a five percent increase for the twenty-two year.
Were you able to account for that in the budget for twenty-two?
Yeah, it's already included in the, is in the preliminary budget.
Well, even though I gave you a rash agree when I stopped in today, I will move approval of the twenty-two seed a contract. I mean, you seem like a stand-up dude, you seem to be some good work for us, yeah.
And we have a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Jason's an aye, and with that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Good evening, everybody, sorry about that, our conference is a little busy this week. So. Alright, we'll move on to, I have majorities, a discussion on building inspection services.
So, just kind of some background, the city used to contract with Southeast Building Inspectors. Their company was bought out by CMS Construction Management Services earlier this year. We began using CMS in April. It was a bit of a rocky start, but we've kind of smoothed things out with CMS, we got a pretty good process going. We are operating under the same contract that they had taken over for Southeast Building Inspectors. They would like to implement their own annual contract, along with that, make some tweaks to how they process those building permits. Some of those changes, I think, will improve the process, some of that may be in a detriment. In their proposed agreement, they would solidify expected permit turnaround times, you know, for flat fees, it would be five business days that they get those back to us, or for valid permits, it'd be fourteen business days, kind of put that in writing, so things aren't hanging out there. However, along with that, they're also offering online permit functionality. However, with those changes, they would also like to see an increase in our building permit fee schedule, which we have found in our discussions with all of these different companies. We are probably lagging behind in those permit fees, as is anyways, we're probably the lower in the area. I believe our fee structure is based on a nineteen ninety-seven building code agreement. So they are a little bit outdated, however, the proposal that CMS has given us may be a little drastic in the other direction. So we've reached out to some other companies as well. We spoke with Goodview County. They are offering a similar functionality, however, they don't have those online capabilities that CMS does. They would also propose fee increases, we would kind of lockstep with the county fee schedule. It would be an increase to our permit fees, but it wouldn't be as drastic as with CMS. And as far as MinSpect goes, Elizabeth and I did have a meeting with them on Monday of this week. They have not given us a formal proposal yet. However, the way they worded it, they would take in our current fee schedule and raise it incrementally over a period of years at a certain percentage. We'll know some more information from that, when we get that proposal. They would have some of those more updated functionalities, like an online permitting portal, things like that. You know, reservations with them is, MinSpect's a Minnesota-based company, but they were recently purchased by Safe Built, I believe it is, which is more of an actual kink lot rent. So, some of those concerns with, we're used to kind of a hometown mom and pop store shop going in another direction may, may have its own issues. So we just kind of wanted to facilitate a bit of a discussion and feel out what council thinks as far as who we want to move forward with. We don't have a standing end date on our contract, CMS at this time, so we have this worked through this, but they would like to get us on an end of contract.
Just personally, I'd like to maybe hear more from MinSpect. I'm, have been for a long time, very much in favor of an online permitting process, I think. I think that's very twenty-first century, right? I think, um, I think that's good. I'm not excited about CMS's fee schedule at all.
Not with a three hundred percent increase?
No, and my reservations with the county, I guess, is just the lack of, you know, maybe an online portal, but then, I don't know, MinSpect is going to the national, I don't know. But so does everything, I mean, right? We've talked about garbage, we started, somebody starts a small garbage company and waste management buys it, right? So, I mean, that's the world we live in, right, is mergers and acquisitions, so, anyway.
Yeah, I would like to hear what MinSpect has to say as well. I mean, if for nothing else, to leverage them against CMS going a three hundred percent increase from twenty-three to twenty-four is just unacceptable, maybe that will then give them the impetus to graduate a scale up too. And I agree with Councilman Verhildebrand, having an online portal makes it easier for the applicant, makes it easier for the inspector, makes it easier for you. If the county does not do zoning administration, then that falls back on you, which in my mind, your guys' plates are full enough. So that kind of, to me, puts the county right out, just out the window, it's not, not acceptable.
Does an online, do you, have you gotten as far to know an online permitting portal through a, through a vendor? Would, we would link that to our website, would we have that functionality?
Yeah, so it would, it would be, we could have it linked from our website to take them to the other website. So we've, we've sat through a couple of demos throughout the years that are similar software, so that it would work through that company. But yeah, we could have it from our website for that. If council wants to hear from one or two of these as well, we could put together a work session for early December, sometime in December, and like, we can invite.
Said a survey out about that.
We can invite one or two companies as well to do presentations if you'd like.
And this is it, I mean, I'm not criticizing your work, but we go from CMS to Goodview County to, I mean, Wauconia. That's a long ways away, but.
Um, so.
There's nobody else in the area, I guess, is my question?
No. They are reaching out to other smaller communities in southeastern Minnesota, and they are talking about putting an office outside of Rochester that would serve us southeastern Minnesota, so.
I bet we got an E D A director that could find an office here in Island.
You beat me to it, yeah, let's build them an office, alright.
So, is council, is council amiable to having staff put together some more info for us?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Do you need any sort of a motion on that, or just hey, do it for us?
Just some clear direction would be helpful.
I'd love to see some information.
If there's additional options, then, I mean.
We have the attorney here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just have a question, I, I don't want to interrupt your giving of direction, so if I can ask a question for your staff. Because the point has been made about the county, if you were to go with Goodview County, they don't do zoning administration. Can I just inquire, Stephen, I think you did work on this, I take it your current provider, CMS, when a building permit application comes in, they test whether the thing that is proposed to be built, both will meet the building code, but also whether it meets your zoning requirements, that's the zoning administration that they're doing, and the county wouldn't do that, they would just test the building permit application against the building code, they wouldn't decide if the thing complies with your zoning code or not, that would be up to you, is that the distinction that?
Correct, yep, so CMS has a zoning administrator on staff.
Yeah.
That previous, or prior to their plan review process, it goes through the zoning administrator, he signs the permit, it goes to plan review. In the, if we went with Goodview County, our office would be in charge of signing off on that zoning administration before we sent it in.
Yeah, so mayor, council, just before you give the direction, it sounds like, I, I, so I get then what that refers to, I wonder about MinSpect, to the extent that's a totally online interface, I, I think it's important for you to know whether your provider, whoever it's going to be, is going to do that zoning piece or not. And the reason I say that is, at least with respect to Goodview County, I'm, I'm lawyer now, and good, city of Goodview, and just understanding where the city's role comes in, in the building permit grant process, that's been a little bit challenging. So I think understanding how that's going to work with whoever you're going to use is important, so maybe staff can, you know, include that in talking to MinSpect about what, what exactly they would provide.
And I think the presentation we have from them was pretty brief and kind of from a ten thousand foot view, but it sounded like that would be part of, they would send the permit through the portal, and it would essentially send a ticket on their end, and it would do the same steps, I believe, zoning review was. So that would be a certain sort of ticket.
That's the place, staff? Any other questions, council? Am I due to move on to last, being the straight of item, item five, which is request to approve Evergreen Place rent increases, and this would be for the residents living down there.
I'll try to keep this as non-confusing as I can. So as you know, the city owns Evergreen Place for about twenty years now, the city has been in a management agreement with Pine Haven, which is attached to Evergreen Place for the management of Evergreen Place. About eighteen months ago, Pine Haven fell under state receivership, and the state had appointed Pathways to then manage Pine Haven. And the state has also directed Pine Haven to oversee the manage of Evergreen Place. There's been a lot of discussion about the management fee during these last eighteen months, I'm trying to figure out, the city pays a lot of the direct expenses to Evergreen Place. However, while the state has been conferring budgets for both Pine Haven and Evergreen Place, they have approached the city to state that our management fee isn't covering the total expenses. And because of the state receivership, Pine Haven essentially can't take on those additional expenses. So the state has approached the city and is proposing, currently we pay sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars in two thousand twenty-three for a management fee, and the state is proposing to increase the management fee of Evergreen Place to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Double.
On a sense, essentially ten thousand dollars per month. To make those numbers work, we would have to increase rent by two hundred dollars approximately for each unit in Evergreen Place to make up that additional, approximately sixty thousand dollars. So, we're bringing this to council to see what decisions council would like to make. Bob and I have had additional conversations with the state. There's also this added component of, because the management fee has not covered all expenses in the past, the state has essentially kept a tally of these fees, and they continue to rise. We've had, actually, Attorney Vos has had multiple conversations with Attorney General's office on behalf of the state. And we were under the impression that if we entered into this new management fee, that essentially the past debts would be forgiven. The state has now come back and said that that's no longer the case. We've asked for clarification, and we have not heard back from the state.
But, but, okay, so by past debts, you're saying, because our management fee hasn't covered costs, that we're in arrears, so to speak, on our, on our support? And now they've got us, so they're, they're wanting to hold us? So in their hundred and twenty thousand dollars, they're making up some arrears, is that their intent? I'm, I'm, I don't understand.
No, I would say going, my understanding is going forward, this, this amount is supposed to be covered with current costs, but that does not cover the past charges that they've been.
Okay.
And that's the last eighteen months.
The new one hundred and twenty thousand dollar, twenty twenty-four management fee would only cover the current cost for twenty twenty-four, it would not make up previous.
I'm sure they fully disclose their financials so that we can verify what it's costing them, right, to?
When pigs fly.
I mean, what opt, we don't, what options do we have?
We have zero.
What a joke.
We have zero options, and we have zero proof that they can justify going from sixty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So are we just finding out about them wanting to go back on that, right? Like, go back to that?
So, as to the looking backwards, as to the arrears amount, as you described, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I think, I think we've mentioned that to you in the past, in the past, and that number is growing, the state says. I, I think what Elizabeth has just said to you is, is exactly right, which is that I have said now a number of times to the state attorney general, representing the state departments that are involved, I don't know what the legal theory is by which we would owe that money, I mean, I literally don't know what, what, why it is we are alleged to owe that money. So I can't, I can't comment in open or closed session about, about the merits of the state's view on that, I just don't know what their view is. Going forward, what they're saying is, and I, I think you all understand this, but as Elizabeth said, as the administrator said, Pathways, the state appointed receiver, has been operating both Pine Haven and Evergreen. That receivership, the state's involvement, was supposed to end in December of this year, next month, but that's now been extended out to December of next year. So there's that window of time, the next year, where apparently the state, through Pathways, is going to continue to operate Pine Haven and Evergreen unless they sell, or so that's another story. And so that, they want to, going forward, make up this alleged operational deficit by, partly by having the city raise rent. As to the looking backwards part, I was under the impression that if we figure things out going forward, the looking backwards was just going to go away, we were going to be resolving that at the same time. The last communication we got would suggest that's not the case, but I can't say anything more about that, I'm not sure it's not the case, I'm not sure it's not going to go away if we agree going forward, and I don't know if it's not going to go away, what the theory is by which we owe that money. So, we really can't say very much about that right now, because we just don't know what the state's.
Okay, so a hundred and twenty thousand covers costs, they say, going forward. Current, will cover everyday monthly costs, what we don't know is they may still want something in arrears.
Can we, can we table it until we get more information from them?
See, we're, what, what is rent at, at Evergreen now?
This is going to bankrupt.
It ranges, so, in a setting like that, rates are going to, are going to range, not to get into tall grass.
Give me a, give me a ballpark, I mean, are they paying four hundred?
Nine hundred to eleven hundred a month.
So they're going to go from nine hundred to eleven hundred, potentially to eleven hundred to thirteen hundred, and?
Which, which still, market-wise, Evergreen is arguably the lowest-costed facility. You can probably sell it, it's considered the most.
Agreed, however, the people that are in there build their budgets year over year, based on what they pay, this is going to.
Yeah, it's fixed income people.
Yeah, it's the most vulnerable in our society.
It, it's that, but you also have to know, when you go into a setting like this, how many people are also under county.
They have county assistance.
Like, they're, they're paid by the county, so there's a lot of components with that, so, I'm kind of saying, like, in, in this case, with what the state is proposing on these cost increases, you're correct. There's, when, when people are on fixed income, or they rely on, on social security, when, when, there are those components, but I'm also saying, like, I don't feel that the county should be guilty when they're asked to do this, given what the cost is compared to many other facilities. And, I'll, it's, it's getting astronomically expensive to operate these places, and in this case, I feel like the state has been very lax on their communication. And it's, and it's not right, because it puts us in a position right at the, right now, but we're having to go back and tell residents, hey, I know, you know, the time is time of year. But if you want to live here, this is what it's going to cost.
And I, hmm. Okay, so, I mean, going forward's one thing, but just when we figure out what they think they want for these arrears, if they haven't been charging us enough, do better. Shame on you.
That's a business decision.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
They've been doing it for eighteen months, right? I mean, we're just now finding out.
Anyway. Okay.
I'll make a motion to table this until we get more information.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to table discussion, or the, a request for the approval on the Evergreen Place rent increases until more information. Is there any other discussion?
Just as a point of clarity, maybe, I see we have a closed session to discuss this. We cannot move this item to closed session to, I mean, if that gives us more information to be able to move on, I, I mean, obviously, it is now November, whatever the heck the date is. We've got one more meeting to get this figured out before the start of the year.
So, no, the, the rent item would need to take place in an open session, and the closed session pertains to the actual sale of Evergreen Place. So, same entity, different.
Yeah.
Issues.
I don't know if we might be able to glean some information from that, that would help us with this.
Okay.
Anything else, council? Anyways, Randy?
Hi.
J P?
Aye.
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
And David is, that concludes the administration. I'm going to take a moment here, I'm going to do this during public input, and I apologize, I'm not going to hear. But I have something to share here, so, forgive me, I was going to speak with some members of the Prairie Island before I started this. So I'm going to go ahead and, and start with a welcome. And today is a special day for all who are here at the November City Council meeting, we have with us members of the Prairie Island Indian Community, or Newak. I'm going to try and burp my way through the words that I think are important to share, so, those who are born out of the water, we welcome you to our council meeting tonight. During the month of November, we are called out to recognize National Native American Heritage Month. This is a time to celebrate the traditions, languages, and stories of Native Americans throughout the United States, while ensuring their heritage. Histories and contributions continue to thrive with each passing generation. In the United States, there are five hundred and seventy-four federally recognized American Indian tribes and Alaska Native entities. Eleven of those nations are here in Minnesota, which includes seven Chippewa and Ojibwe, and four Dakota tribes, including Prairie Island. Pine Island, also known as Wasuita, island of pines, the rags are made from the Dakota people. Where we sit today was land that housed the Dakotas with abundant water, food, and shelter. Where once stood a stand of white pines that made the island of pines. The trees were nearly destroyed by the European settlers, but today we can be proud that we have brought back many of those white pines through our programs. So our Pine Island area is once again home to white pines for us and future generations to enjoy. This year's theme for Native American Heritage Month is celebrating tribal sovereignty and identity. We have been fortunate as a community here in Pine Island to grow our relationships with Prairie Island, learn from them, learn from, and understand, and learn about them, where they come from as a people. Here tonight, I look forward to our continuation to seek ways to strengthen and support our mutual communities, Pine Island and Prairie Island, through consultations, considerations, cooperations, unity, and above all, respect. We can observe this relationship and its strength not only during November, but throughout the whole year. As many of our council members and city staff members have the opportunities, opportunity to see firsthand the work that is being done at Prairie Island, we look forward to the opportunities to showcase the work that is being done here in Pine Island with our Prairie Island community members. I also had here, we are very fortunate as a community to have with our staff James Lee Hitchcock, and he is a member of both the Ojibwe and the Mohican nations. And so I think, I'm truly proud that at this time we can recognize him and thank him for both he is as a person, but being here calling Pine Island home. We welcome Prairie Island community to Pine Island, Pine Island, and we look forward to what the future holds for this, our community. In the language of Minnesota, "Adamiya, thank you." As we welcome to recognize this proclamation with us, which states, whereas November is recognized as National Native American Heritage Month, and whereas there are five hundred and seventy-four federally recognized American Indian tribes and Alaska Native entities in the United States, eleven which come from Minnesota home, including the Chippewa, the Ojibwe, the Chippewa, and the four Dakota tribes, including the Prairie Island people. And whereas November is a time to celebrate the traditions, languages, and stories of Native American, Alaska Native, Native Hawaiian, and affiliated island communities, and whereas we want to ensure their rich heritage, histories, and contributions continue to thrive with each passing generation. And whereas this month, and every month throughout the year, we celebrate the culture and heritage of remarkable Americans who deeply enrich the quality and character of our nation. And whereas we celebrate Indian country with its remarkable diversity of American Indian and Alaska Native cultures, whereas we look to strengthen and support our mutual communities through consultation, considerations, cooperations, unity, and respect. Now therefore, I, Mayor David Fries, do hereby recognize November as Pine Island's Native American Heritage Month, and I call this observation to our citizens, and call upon our citizens to seek our ways to learn and educate themselves on our local Native American histories. Adamiya, thank you. Respectfully, David Fries, Mayor of Pine Island, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Welcome. I'm going to talk to me first, so I can make sure I have those words correctly. We're, we're working on it, so. We're going to work on a, move on to planning commission, with resolution twenty-three thirty-eight, which is approving or denying various, or Jonathan Hall.
Uh, council and members of the audience, I guess, I am the person in question on this, so I'll be refusing myself from the vote on this item.
See you, thank you. Thank you for being here. Welcome to Pine Island. Good luck with your service, yeah, thank you.
Taking this one or a little bit?
Kind of a tough act to follow, so. No pressure. Um, so throughout this, there's a lot of measurements and decimal points and information, so. Maybe to pause or repeat something or whatever, just, just jump in. So, this, the city has received an application, um, from Jonathan and Angie Paul, um, in regards to a variance to their front yard setback. Uh, for the property located at three hundred North Main Street. This property is zone R two, um, and has a front yard setback of twenty feet. Uh, the application is for a front porch, uh, facing North Main Street. The current setback of their building is twenty-three point two feet. The proposed porch addition, um, is eight feet wide, so that would remove the front yard setback to fifteen point two feet. And would then require a variance of five point eight feet. The R two zoning district, um, is a little bit different. Uh, it is the only zoning district that has an exception to this front yard setback. Um, it states that on any block where there are at least two or more residents that have already been constructed facing that street. That are in violation of that setback, you would then take the average of all of the homes, and that would become the new setback line. Um, with Seth provided, um, in exhibit A, some measurements of those properties. Um, the one on the furthest south at twenty-three point two is the property in question. The other three properties are thirteen point four nine, thirteen point nine six, and nineteen point three three, so none of those properties meet that twenty foot setback. So this would qualify for that exception. Um, so to find the new setback, instead of the twenty feet, you would take the average of those four properties. Which comes out to seventeen point five, so the new setback that we're working with is seventeen point five feet. Um, unfortunately, this still does not allow for enough room for the eight foot porch. Um, and would still require two point three or two feet and four inches between applicants' request for fifteen point two. And the new average that is seventeen point five. So now that you've heard all those numbers, um, this variance, um, goes under the same review. Um, it's kind of a three-pronged review, um, first step would be the variance shall be permitted when they are in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning code. Um, this is just a residential addition, uh, which is an allowable use under the R two zoning district. Uh, the variance shall only be permitted when consistent with the comprehensive plan, uh, all future changes in comprehensive plan for this area are residential, so again. Uh, that would be permitted, then we get into, uh, the practical difficulties test. Uh, so this is the three-pronged legal standard, uh, that variances have to be meet for approval. The first prong is the applicant proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, um, again, uh. Adding on to an existing residential building as a reasonable use of the property. The second standard within the practical difficulties, um, according to Minnesota statute as well as our city code. Is the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the. Uh, this is commonly interpreted, uh, to be physical characteristics of a piece of property. Whether it be topography, um, hills that make it unable to build on, uh, whether they're natural wetlands. Vegetation, things like that, that make. Development inoperable in certain areas. When it comes to this property, um, there are no real significant burdens of natural features. On the property, um, it's a pretty standard city block, um, so I. Couldn't, couldn't fit the square peg in the round hole, uh, I could not find a reason why it would meet that, uh, practical difficulty. Um, and then the third prong, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. All the other setbacks on this, uh, block, uh, would be similar to what this proposed would be, so it would not alter that essential character. The zoning board, um, had a meeting on November fourteen, they had a public hearing. Um, did not receive any public comment, really for or against or pertinent to. The variance, uh, the planning and zoning commission did vote unanimously against the recommendation. Um, just due to that lack of a practical difficulty being established. So I don't know if.
So.
Bob or Craig has anything to add?
Those, our zoning code says that it has to meet all three practical difficulty.
Yeah, so, our, again, our, um, local code echoes Minnesota statute three ninety-four. That there has to be a practical difficulty established to allow for a variance, and that those three prongs are. What make up that practical difficulties test.
I missed the first part, those other properties had to do that too?
Um, no, they're building predates, zoning code, so. Legal non-conforming properties, so. They're not required to have variances that predate them.
If this were to pass, what would? The consequences of it being going forward, other people could do it, or what's?
Yeah, ma- mayor and council, I mean, the normal, um, I mean, to, to be blunt about it, uh, where you've got a variance request. And there was, I guess, little or no opposition, I don't know what feedback, but nobody shows the hearing, I understand it.
We received no written or calls or, um, comments about the current.
Yeah, so the risk to a city of, of granting variance, um, in the face of no opposition from land, uh, res- residents, uh. Landowners around the use is low, right, I mean, it's, it's the other people that live in the area that would be opposed to granting variance that would have legal claims. Or variance being granted, but, uh, councilor, your question is right, which is even when there isn't opposition. And there is no one that's going to be offended by the granted variance, argue by loosening up your variance standard, ignoring one of the prongs. Uh, taking the guts, taking the, the, um, the, the rule out of rules here for variance. And, I mean, the only, the only thing I would say about that is, I think ultimately that's a council decision, I'm not gonna tell you you can't do it. Um, it would be illegal to do anything ultimately to your decision to make. I mean, my concern is just that when you're granting a variance, variances and, and conditional use permits are compared a lot. The difference between them is important, though, conditional use permits are things that you, the city council, have identified as uses. That are permitted as long as they meet certain conditions. Variances are where you're allowing someone to not comply with your law, right? As long as this standard is met, so you're really, it's two different things, you're, you have permitted uses as long as conditions are met. Or allowing someone to not comply strictly with the rules because the standards are met. So it's two different questions that you're answering when you're talking about a CUPR variance. So I'm a little concerned about you loosening up your allowing of people to not comply with your rules. Uh, but that's ultimately your decision to make and not mine, and it is not insignificant, it's significant, there is no opposition to this variance.
Yeah, and you, you have to take into consideration to. At least set a precedent right now with, with, uh, making those allowances, but I think, what I also think is a little bit harder too is. You know, this is where I go back to, in this case, where Mr. Paul's, he's also in the council, so there's gonna be. Scrutiny on that as well, you know, and making the. Against the city's own variances. So there's, there's a couple considerations there. It needs recommendation too, so.
Yeah, mayor, just on that point, I mean, it's obviously an obvious point and important point to make. The, the council member has identified himself with the applicant, says he's accusing himself, that is all he can do literally. There's nothing else he can do to, to, to address that, other than say he's not gonna participate in debate about it, not go on it, so, but there's nothing else that he can do like that, so.
Doesn't really sound like we have a feasible choice, so. On this. I guess I'll have to make the, uh, motion to deny it.
I'll second.
Our motion is second to deny the variance, or, ask any other discussion. Randy?
Hi.
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Like the time of works, and then here to request the, yes, number six, what is the construction in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred two five dollars, two five cents? For the twenty twenty-three Southwest Green Project. Also listens for the work that is completed.
I'll move the estimate for, estimate number six for Winston.
I'll second. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, estimate number six, Winston, obstruction, any other discussion? Randy?
Hi.
J K?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Hi. I have a B resolution twenty-three, that's thirty-nine, approving hydraulic design grid. Now, two five one zero, this will be reached down by homes.
Uh, mayor and council, so this is a resolution that's. Would basically let the, uh. Two-year design frequency. So, um, because the. Well, with that, because that substation is closed. Uh, because the, uh, substation is closed and. Now, existing bridge, um, is less than. So that's less than creation. The red wave is a single, the top. And so, uh, this is what the two-year design. Blue, uh, capture. Represents the.
Oh, Lord. What, I'm, sorry.
Sum this down for me, is this gonna let more water to town or less?
Can you repeat the stuff on the thing, I don't, a two-year design, I don't know what that means.
Is it gonna let more water in or less, that's the biggest thing, I mean, I don't, two-year, ten-year.
Okay, so it's letting more water in, um, in the two years. But after that point, it overtops, so in the ten-year, or a few, five hundred years, doesn't matter.
You're talking floods, ten, hundred-year flood you're talking about?
So there, with any new, we have to meet the, uh, the, we would call it a null rise position, so. We have to allow that water to come through the bridge and not impact anything else. We can't elevate that, um, it's quite elevation. The substation side and door. We're keeping that, uh, surface. But as you can see on that lower, that cross section, that green, green area, so that red line is what the new profile will look after. Uh, that's moved up. That green area is all excavated interior, so that, that is what. That opening underneath. Green area will be, um, excavated and that bridge will stay.
So the, okay, so the green area will be open. So there'll be way more flow under the bridge than there is now.
It'll be more flow under the bridge, but again, once it gets that, uh, three, over that three-inch range.
So it'll slow it down before it comes ripping into town. It's going to flood the town faster, because it's still gonna get choked up down river.
More, more water will be getting through.
So it's going to exacerbate the problem for the people that are already getting flooded from that point down river.
Well, and that's why we're pursuing the two-year design, the three-inch range. Because the ten-year would be thirty, the bridge would be thirty-seven feet longer, two and a half feet higher.
Than, than this design?
No, th- th- this is a two.
Okay.
Ten-year, it would be thirty-seven feet wider, uh, thirty, thirty-seven feet longer and two and a half feet taller.
And it's the least worst option.
So this is the best we can hope for?
Correct, yeah, we, we did need for the, we'd be telling, uh, staff and. City of Huppex, uh, and their, um, they told us that they're okay. With the two-year designs, uh, they just wanted this for.
If the flooding gets worse in downtown, what liability do we open ourselves up to if we support this?
Whatever, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, well, because the FEMA guidelines, we, this is the, this is the.
Yeah. What happens when you rebuild, it gets built to today's standards, right, so?
When is this expected to start?
Next year.
So after spring flooding?
Well, you, you probably need in, yeah.
Okay.
Seeing flood from this town in April, I've seen in September, and then in June, so we can finally say after spring flood as much as we want, but. This town's split between two rivers, we get punched from one side to the other.
I'll move resolution twenty-three thirty-nine approving the bridge design.
The motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second for revolution twenty-three thirty-nine, any other discussion?
Can we, um, send out notification to our downstream? Residents that this is going to be happening and it could increase the flood?
No.
No. As soon as you admit that we did that.
I mean.
There, I mean, I'm sorry, Bob, but there's lawyers in this world for a reason, as soon as you say that and send it out officially, I would not do that.
So we're just gonna lean them in blindly?
I just don't think it's necessary, I think you're, you're, you're creating unnecessary unrest.
Yeah, anybody who can, anybody who sees this going on.
This is a public.
Ask the exact same question.
This is a public meeting, so.
So that, yeah, there'll be, there'll be, people know that the bridge is gonna be. Replaced, and we, I, I think we started talking about this around six years, seven years ago. That lost its shuffle. Other options, nice, so it's the least worst option.
They're going to see it when that green space gets excavated, they're gonna know. If they care, they're gonna see it, so.
Anyways, we'll move, uh, Randy?
Hi.
J K?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
David, just had a few questions. Bob, we're on the legal.
Uh, nope.
I'll move approval of claims.
Second.
Hi.
J K?
Hi.
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
Got them to partner monthly reports, the administrator is first.
So I have something that's not in my report, um, so everything's in my report, but I have one other, um. Point I want to put on your radar, at the December council meeting, we will be reviewing. point I want to put on your radar, at the December council meeting, we will be reviewing our emergency notification system. And so Stephen has done a lot of work on that and we've been running tests. But essentially what it is, is residents will be able to sign up for either an email, a text message, or a phone call. And then they'll be able to choose what information from the city they would like to receive any of those notifications on. And, um, yeah, we're gonna launch that at the beginning of the year. And so this has been a long time in the making and it's been very exciting to test that out. And so that will, we'll have more information on that at the December council meeting for final approvals.
The tests were very, uh, quickly worked well, so, uh, like was said, it's nice with this, it's, it brings everything from, uh, updates with department back to, to city events, like there's ample opportunities for the public to be engaged. Um, so they, I feel at this point, they're not gonna be able to say that they didn't know or they didn't have, uh, this is great because it spans all, uh, practices and regulations.
H O? You had a lot going on in the library?
Oh, yes.
Uh, thank you for letting me talk tonight, I've been in and out, but I'm back for this month. Um, for those of you who don't know, I'm Rachel Gray, I'm the librarian here in town. And as David mentioned, we have a lot of things going on at the library right now. Uh, the biggest thing, but when you walk in our main entrance, is that we have a testify exhibit up right now. What that is, is a photo exhibit of, uh, artifacts that the Page family, um, have Diane and Alan Page, um, this is their collection of artifacts from the civil rights, from slavery, all the way through today, basically. And this was originally presented at Hennepin County in twenty eighteen. And, uh, Selco had the opportunity to bring this to the local libraries as a legacy program. So we've got six different posters up in the library, um, that have some very, very impactful images of, um, the way race and NDA, especially the, um, African-Americans have been portrayed in, um, popular culture. The largest, or the full exhibit's actually eighteen posters, so if people wanna see that, they can go down to Austin, they've got the full exhibit on display right now. In conjunction with that, we have, um, we just had this program called Minnesota's Hooded History. That was on the Ku Klux Klan in southeast Minnesota. We had about twenty people show up for that, which was amazing. Um, I was slightly nervous because we had some pretty, I won't say contentious discussion ahead of time. But it wasn't the nicest discussion that I've seen on Facebook. And, um, everyone is very respectful, someone who was not quite underst-, you know, was questioning the reasoning behind this. Came and really thought it was a well-presented and unbiased presentation, so I was very, very happy.
Everybody on Facebook was respectful?
Not on Facebook, at the program.
Oh, good.
At the program.
Like, that's not, I don't, I don't, no, I saw some of the comments, they were.
We're lucky that I can be sometimes respectful on Facebook, so, yeah, um, so that was, I was very, very excited that we had that. Um, and kind of in conjunction with both of those things going on, we have a really nice display upstairs of all of our, a lot of our books on race. And on the civil rights movement. And then downstairs, in conjunction with Native American, uh, month, we have a little bit of a display on the, some of the books we have for the kids for, um, our Native American heritage and cultures in the area, so please come down and take a look at those. Otherwise, just a really quick thing, Di-November's going on, take a look at our social media, we're having a lot of fun with that this year. Um, today they're talking about temporary tattoos and finding, um, the pigeon in the youth library. And, uh, that'll continue tomorrow, so it's a full story. And then we also are just finalizing our One Town, One Title programming. That book will be Population Forty-Five by Michael Perry. Um, he's a small, he was a small-town firefighter in New Auburn, Wisconsin. And, uh, he was also an author of essays, essays, so he, um, this book is really, really neat about small-town life. Being an author, being a firefighter and an EMT, and just really gives a really nice snapshot of, um, small-town living. He will be coming November first. And that was really exciting for me. Otherwise, um, oh, then of course, the fire department has graciously volunteered to help out with that, so stay tuned. Uh, next year, January, our book club will be switching from Wednesday evenings to Tuesday mornings. Um, all of our book club members are currently retired. I'm sorry. And so, um, due to their popular demand, we're changing to ten o'clock, ten-thirty on Tuesday more, uh, the second Tuesday of the month. Otherwise, our Books and Brews is always going on on Wednesday evening, first Wednesday of the month at six-thirty. I am also gonna be working with, um, South by Southeast Brewing, doing an adult spelling bee once a quarter, so that'll be a lot of fun. Uh, look for those, that's starting, I think it's, is in February is our first one. And the last thing I have is we do have an opening on our Board of Trustees, so if you're interested in that, stop by the library, um, and we'd be happy to give you information to become a member of our board. And we will be closed Thursday, Friday, and Saturday this week for Thanksgiving, so.
We're gonna have a spelling bee at the brewery?
At the brewery.
Yeah, I'm in.
I will sign you up, Mike, this is wonderful.
Hundred and ten percent, I'm in, yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Yeah, right? So, uh, any questions from you guys that I can answer tonight? Wonderful, thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Rachel.
Public Works, do you think I'm ahead?
I don't think so.
E D A, Mitch, you've been busy. Thank you for your work you're doing, fire hard. Stay safe for the upcoming holidays and don't do, uh, close a church in the fires, please. Oh, no. Always have to have one of those, did you, can I share? Uh, Fisher, did you, welcome, did you have anything you wanted to add? Special, if anybody admitted to me that, uh, it's a pleasure meeting you today, so it's a great, humble, we're at five, five hundred and five, why don't we now get on the phone? Correct. I'll get away. Thanks for coming down again, as always. Otherwise, we will be going into a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute section one three D point zero five subdivision three C three. The meeting will be closed to discuss offers or toner office for the purchase or sale of real property by the city, for every place, P I D number six eight four two seven zero zero three zero.